Yes.
Okay, let's start the meeting with the pledge if you guys don't mind doing us a question. Thank you. Oh. First thing on your agenda, A and R submission, seven eleven bones were submitted by Flick Law Group, D C for the estate of Richard Chardier. Hello, how are you this week?
Good, thank you very much. Good evening, John Flick for the estate of Richard Chardier. I don't know, would you like me to kind of give a brief presentation?
If you want.
So, Mr. Chardier passed away in April of twenty four. And March of twenty four and prior to his passing away, it's my understanding, I'm sorry, twenty five, no twenty four. Prior to his passing away, the town had approached Mr. Chardier to purchase a small corner of his property on seven eleven Baldenville Road. And they paid him two hundred dollars for that. They attached a plan to that deed and stated in the deed that the that it did not create any new boundaries. Well, unfortunately, that's not the case. It not only created new boundaries, but it made Mr. Chardier's lot, which was a pre-existing non-conforming lot, more non-conforming. We have tried to sell the property. We cannot sell the property because it's now a non-conforming lot. It doesn't comply with Templeton zoning and it did create new boundaries. So we have applied for a variance with the zoning board of appeals. If the, this plan would create, or exacerbate an existing non-conformity, which as you know by law in Massachusetts, we cannot do without a variance. We don't have a date yet for the Z B A hearing. We did apply at the same time we submitted the application to this board for the A and R approval. Still waiting on that date for the Z B A hearing?
I believe it's going to be July fifteenth.
Okay, okay. So if the board were inclined to approve the A and R in advance of that meeting, I would suggest that it be approved subject to the granting of a variance and not be released to the property owner to be the estate until such time as a variance is granted and the appeal period is passed. Happy to answer any questions.
Nope, I'm familiar with it. Everybody else familiar with this? Dennis, are you familiar with what's going on?
What's up?
Are you familiar with the plan we're talking about? This is left-hand corner of the lot?
I think it's just one here.
No, no, yeah, but it's, that's the, right there was we're talking that corner.
Yeah.
Just that small little radius on the corner of the street right there. It's already done, so I don't.
We're basically fixing a problem that was created.
The formality on paperwork is what it is. The physical aspect of it has already been done.
What are they asking us to do?
We're just basically just fixing what, you know, the
The A and R is that corner right there. It's giving it to the town because when they redid the road over there, they took that little radius to do the road. And it was just that, like Mr. Flick said, it's something that should have been addressed.
But what do they want us to?
We're just gonna sign up, this is an A and R, we just need to sign off on this, endorse this. So they can go to Z B A and tell them that we endorsed it and then Z B A can give a variance. And it makes everything the way it should be. And if you tell it's highlighting the detail written in the middle of the plan.
Will that affect the walkway that goes through there?
It's already done.
All job is done. Okay, so.
Yes.
We have to, okay, you want to convey it to the town?
Convey it to the town, correct.
Okay, yeah, okay, I understand.
Yeah.
Should I go through the checklist?
Yeah, why don't you go through the checklist, Charlie?
Identification, excuse me, identification of the plan by name of owner record.
Yeah.
The statement of approval under subdivision control law are not required.
Yep.
Zoning classification.
Yep, village.
In the case of creation of a new lot, the remaining land area frontage. Notice of any decision by the zoning board of appeals, which?
T D B.
Yep. Name of any of butters.
Yep.
Distance to nearest permanent monument.
Any of them.
Location of all existing buildings.
Yep.
Location of any easement or way.
Not a talkable, isn't it? Well, uh.
It's not.
Just one with that line that's right there in the back of that railroad, is that possible? No.
It's acceptable, yeah. With four copies of Form A, with four copies of A and R, description of lots. Fee was waived. All lots about a qualified way. All lots have adequate frontage, which?
Yeah, yeah.
Vital access exists to each lot. All lots have adequate acreage, which again is already
Yeah, right, it's going to the town, so.
So. I would make a motion that we submit the plans as approved. Pending the Z B As.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on it? Seeing none, all available? I, well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Alright. Do you want to hold on for the Mylar, John, or you?
Why don't, why don't I leave the Mylar here until we get the Z B A decision and I'll just pick them both up at the same time?
Okay.
That way
That's fair enough.
Doesn't get inadvertently recorded.
Or I can deliver them to you.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I want to slide the point down, guys, if you can start signing these off, so we can, you know, get westward itself.
There's one more right here, Charlie, something. Can mix those up?
Correct.
I put one on top of the other one.
Or maybe there was. Sweet.
No, I put, why not?
Those are both.
As long as I have two.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have special permit preliminary site plan review submitted by McCarthy Engineering, Inc. for Jeffrey and Colleen Dusty for the property located at Baker Lane, Mass, uh, sorry, map, five dash eleven parcel fifty five. Stevens Way map five dash eleven parcel thirty nine point two and Cottage Lane map five dash eleven parcels forty one and fifty six. I'll entertain a, just, um, public hearing, or?
It is a public hearing.
Alright, so I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing for said property.
So moved?
Wait here, second, second, all available? Alright, we're officially in a public hearing. So, Mr. Fless, first of all, I just want to address the audience. I try to, actually, I don't even have my hammer to even say it this time, but I usually keep my hammer next to me. Everybody just, I ask you to speak quiet. Everybody that wants to have something to say will say it. I'll give you the chance to say it. Don't keep asking the same question because I won't allow it a second time. So just pay attention, so everybody's quiet. So when the time comes, it's your turn. You've already gotten the answers for the previous question. But everybody will get to talk as long as everybody's quiet. And I only give everybody one warning, otherwise they have to leave. And this is your first one. So this is how I run my meetings, so everybody can go home. Alright, so with that being said, Mr. Fless, thank you.
Directly, Wesley Fless, with darkness night, here this evening for, at the applicants and the owners, Jeffrey and Paul and Dustin. The project that we're looking at in front of you is located off of Cottage Lane and Baker's Lane and Stevens Way. Historically, that's a piece of property, a portion of the property was actually part of the former subdivision that was moved, that I'm looking at, that was thirty years ago now, or forty years later now, for the extension of Baker Lane and then the creation of Stevens Way. The rest of Stevens Way was not constructed. And then, and then, and then finished. Then in addition to that, about two years ago, the previous applicant was in front of the board for a special permit for manufactured homes. At that time, the proposal was for forty nine manufactured homes. Both given off the driveway off of Cottage Lane and connecting into Baker's Lane. At that time, there was a lot of pushback from my northern neighbors, also from the boroughs and the town departments. The product went away. I think it was, I don't know if it was officially denied by the board, but I know the product went away. The landowner has since taken back the, the projects. That developer is no longer involved with this project. The landowner is looking to develop the property himself, to the point that he gets all his permits from the town. Hopefully, and then you look to bring a developer in to do the development of the, the site. We're here in front of you this evening for two permits, one being a special permit for open space residential development and the second being preliminary subdivision plan. We're doing it in that manner such that before we get too much further into really the design of the product, that we know that we can get a special permit for the open space residential development, which is, in layman's term, really a cluster development. It's to allow for open space, but also for residential development. The plan that you see here in front of you is considered a yield plan under the regulation. We look at this as a conventional subdivision layout. What we take is the underlying zoning, which is residential agricultural one. The minimum lot area in the zoning out there is one acre, minimum frontage is one hundred and fifty feet. You lay out a subdivision, including all twenty eight acres of the property, looking to maximize the entire property. In this case, we came up with twenty lots, twenty residential lots, off two roadways. The first roadway coming in, cul-de-sac off of Cottage Lane, and the second being the connector. The extension of Stevens Way from the intersection of Baker Lane into this piece here. The cul-de-sac is roughly seventeen hundred and fifty linear feet, and this connection piece here is roughly four hundred feet in length. The purpose of the yield plan is to give us the maximum number of lots we can get on a development on this piece of property. We could permit this as a by right subdivision, but that wasn't the intent, what we were trying to accomplish. Since obviously there is a lot of complaints that were under the previous development, and then since that time, we have met with some of the town officials in trying to figure out what best serves this piece of property. The first step of that was to provide some conceptual plans. Sat down with some of the town officials with those conceptual plans. One of those officials that kind of drove some of the layout of this is, is the fire chief now, and again, as we get into the, the next, the next show. As I stated, we're here for a special permit for open space residential development. Benefits of that or the objectives of that, great building space, protect some of the natural land on the property, but also provide residential, uh, or houses, right? Housing is, is a great need right now in the state. You know, it's not everybody's favorite. You know, everybody would love this to be open space, but, you know, the, the landowner does have the right to develop the property, and so we're trying to find a best way to develop this property in harmony with the neighbors best we could, but also serving the right of the, the developer, the, the landlord. And so what we have in front of you this evening is still a twenty, twenty lot subdivision, but we're looking to do it under the open space residential development special permit process. As part of that, the reduction in the lot area, as long as we're, we're having what we do. And then there's also a reduction in the lot frontage requirement. And so as I stated, the underlying zoning is one acre, a minimum lot area, and then a hundred and fifty feet of lot frontage. Under the open space residential development, we're allowed to reduce the lot area to half an acre and also reduce the lot frontage to seventy five feet. Seventy five feet doesn't really create a lot of frontage for a, a house to sit on. And so what we were looking actually to come to the lots around a hundred feet for frontage, make it a, a developable piece of property. We didn't really go down, all the way down to that seventy five foot restriction because it doesn't really make the developable piece of property. When you're done with all the offsets to the property. The, the property line offsets for each lot is fifteen feet in each side. If you're at seventy five feet, your house could only be forty five feet wide, right? So we want to give some room there to be able to build a house on these lots. And so the reduction in, in frontage, reduction in lot area, produce what you see here in front of you tonight, still twenty lots. We still had enough room to provide the twenty lots that were produced under that maximum yield from. But we do show a reduction in the, the road front. From here to the end of the cul-de-sac now, instead of seventeen hundred and fifty feet, it's fourteen hundred and fifty feet. So we save three hundred linear feet of roadway. Yes, there is a cost savings to the developer, but also the intent of this is that when the town takes over the roadways, it's also a benefit to the town that when they're maintaining the roads, it's less roadway they have to complain. This connection piece really stays the same where it's a four hundred foot, uh, long connection piece, the extension of Stevens Way from Baker's Lane. Initially, in some of our concept plans that we proposed to the town was, we didn't have this roadway here. We actually had a driveway there. We proposed that and our initial, uh, plan to the town when we were just getting some feedback from some of the officials. The fire chief, Chief Dickie, asked that we make that a public way also. He was concerned if that we just made it a driveway between properties, is who maintains that, who plows it? How does the maintenance vehicles use that if, if it comes in disrepair or if it doesn't get plowed in the wintertime? And so as part of this, he asked us to make that a public way, uh, with the intent is obviously the town that takes it over once the construction is completed on this project. One of the things that we were trying to accomplish on this project was to not add additional traffic to Baker's Lane. Uh, we obviously heard the complaints before. We obviously saw the, we know the intersection of Baker's Lane and Route two A is not ideal. The site distance there is not ideal. So we're not, we're not, we weren't looking to add traffic to Baker's Lane. Uh, one of the things that we went back and forth with some of the iterations like that, we were looking to just put emergency access here. With some, uh, back and forth with Chief Dickie, we, we, we said, okay, we can make a, a public way here, but what we want to do is we still want to gate this end of Baker Lane. We don't want to add traffic onto Baker's Lane. We don't want to increase or make the, the intersection any worse than it already is. We don't want to increase the traffic down there. We know the intersection of Cottage Lane and Route two A is sufficient. You can see better in that intersection. And so we're proposing a gated access here on Baker's Lane where the gate there will be only accessible by the police and fire department and the D P W. Those are the only three departments in the town that have access to that. That will be closed at all times unless the emergency vehicles need to get through there in case any, there's any emergency on the, the cul-de-sac here that's blocked off. And so that, that's the purpose of this roadway here. It's just an emergency access roadway. It's going to be built to the town standards. It's, it'll be designed to the town standards, but it'll be gated off and no additional traffic will go, go down Baker's Lane. The proposal that we see in front of you will also tie into the municipal sewer. Uh, the intent is to bring the sewer out to Baker's Lane where there's sewer mains in Baker Lane. Everything will flow gravity from here, uh, into, into the subdivision come down and tie into the sewer in Baker Lane. Uh, the intention is also to tie into the municipal water service that's out here. And, and part of our, uh, back and forth with the town officials is actually one of the complaints that the town had right now is there's two dead-end water mains, right? There's a dead-end water main on Baker's Lane to Stevens Way and then also one on Cottage Lane. And so the water department actually sees this as a benefit because what we're proposing to do is loop the water main from Cottage Lane back out to Baker's Lane. So you don't have that stagnant water at the end of both of those streets now. And so the water main will be looped in through the subdivision. We will have a small section of water main that's dead-ended there. It will be a much better situation than currently exists now. So we, we will work with the sewer department on the sewer design, uh, making sure that they're comfortable with the sewer design on this and also work with the light and water department uh, with regards to the, the light, uh, electrical and water connections into their systems. As I stated, we do have, uh, half acre lots out here. We, we went as close as we could with a half acre lot areas. Uh, that still allows us for the flexibility to be able to build residential units on these properties, uh, per the zoning. By doing that, it provides us, like I said, it's a twenty eight acre parcel. Under the open space residential special permit process, we have to provide at least half of that as open space. So we have to at least provide at least fourteen acres of open space. The proposal that's in front of the, the board tonight actually shows, and I believe it's, I want to get the number correctly for you guys, is we're looking at about fifteen point six acres of open space or above, above that fourteen acre threshold. You're not allowed to use the open space or count the open space number, um, anything that has drainage infrastructure above ground. Anything below ground, we don't have to count, uh, reduced from the open space. And so we do have two areas that we show for above ground drainage infrastructure. So we're taking that off, uh, that calculation. We're still at about fourteen and a half acres of open space. And so we're still having about a ha- half acre more than we would need for the open space requirement under the open space, uh, special permit. Part of that, um, the requirements under the open space residential development also is we need to provide at a minimum a thirty foot buffer around the projects excluding where the streets tie in to the adjacent residential properties. And so we do show that thirty foot buffer around here. In the back here, we actually show more of a buffer. And the same thing in the back here, we show more of that thirty foot buffer, but at minimum around the entire par- project, we do provide that thirty foot buffer, uh, to this development. In a conventional plan, we wouldn't have to provide that buffer, but because it's a cluster development or open space residential development, we do have to provide that additional buffer to the naming residences. And so we saw that as a benefit to the, to the neighbors, uh, between the two options. We will design our, our drainage system to the local, state and federal regulations that we are required to. As part of this process moves along, if, if we were to get favorable decisions from the, the planning board on both the special permit and the preliminary subdivision plan, we'll be back hopefully by the end of the summer with definitive subdivision plans. And that's when we really get to the design of the grade of the roadway, the, the drainage system, the sewer and the water connections into the, the project. But really what we wanted to get in front of the board for was to get decided if, if they're comfortable with an open space concept instead of a conventional concept is really the two options that we were looking at at this point. We wanted to get away from that manufactured homes, because we know, we know that wasn't what the town wanted. Um, and so we went back to the other options that are allowable by your regulations of the town. And so we will, like I said, be back in front of the planning board again at another day, uh, for an additional permit. Uh, we will also do all the rest of the permitting that were required by the, the federal regulations, uh, when we get to the construction phase, if we get to that point. Um, and so there's, there's plenty of other steps that go along with this. As I stated, the, the landowners are looking to bring this to the end of the permitting phase, and they're not developers. Uh, they're looking to actually would like to sell to a real developer and have them develop it. Um, they didn't have good luck with the gentleman that was in front of you before. And so now they've been talking to actually a couple of developers that we work with a lot, uh, that are interested in the piece of property. You know, we see the value of the properties in Tuppence right now. They're right, they're kind of, I know you guys talked about a couple seconds, right? It's crazy, right? The, the amount of the house they're going for. So people are looking to build in Tuppence right now, so. Um, so there are plenty of developers that are looking to buy this product afterward, afterwards. O- other than that, like since, you know, we're in a preliminary phase, um, we're here to obviously get feedback from the board, from the neighbors. That hopefully at some point we can get a, a vote from the board, if not tonight, if it's in, in the future in the summer. And then, like I said, once that happens, if we get to the point that we get a favorable decision, then we'll move to a definitive stage. But I know there's a lot of neighbors here that probably have questions. I can, I'll answer as best as I can. Like I said, we're, some of the design hasn't been done. Uh, I will tell you from a drainage standpoint, I know that was a big concern from the neighbors is right now, right, you have water coming down Baker's Lane, uh, currently because that drainage system wasn't finished for Stevens Way. The way we have, um, our intended drainage is we're trying to get all our drainage. You know, all this is going to be cut off and brought down to our drainage system down here. So a lot of the runoff that from here up that comes down toward Baker's Lane and Stevens Way is going to get cut off by this road and be brought down to the detention basin back here. Um, any of the runoff in this area here will be brought down to this basin here and anything in here. We're looking to catch and catch basins and then pipe back out the basin either in this direction or if the elevations, uh, if we get the elevation to work, some of it may come back up here. But the, you know, we will, like I said, we have local regulations that the town has. We have state regulations we need to follow and federal regulations we need to follow. We've got some drainage. But we are trying to improve as best as we could to the drainage issue you guys have. We obviously heard you when we were here for the manufactured homes. We know there is a drainage issue out there. We can completely solve it because we don't have the right to go in and change anything that was done before, but we can at least help, uh, try to redirect some of the water that's coming into your area as best as we can. Um, so that is some of the things that we do have as part of our design, our preliminary design. And once we get to the real design of the product, that's part of what we're trying to accomplish. And if I open up the board, um, and any questions in the base they have?
Yeah, I think I'm going to open it to the audience first and we just get some some bullets as far as what's at concern. So if anybody in the audience have any questions, raise your hand and we're just going to go right through it. We have, wait, wait, you're just going to announce your name for the record.
Okay, my name is Judy McJuan. I had a question. Um, I live on Baker Lane. Um, actually thirty seven Baker Lane. In the back of our house in the spring and when we have heavy rains, we have a lot of water that comes into our yard from where we are. So I'm wondering how the development of a house in back of our lot would affect that drainage because I don't want more water pushing up into our yard.
Yep. So which, which one?
Thirty seven. Thirty seven.
Okay, yep. So when we look at, when we get to the design part of it, we get to our definitive plans. And so we actually have to look at how much water goes to your property now from our site. And we have to make sure we don't increase the amount of water that goes to your property afterwards. And so we will design it and then the board will hire a peer review engineer to review our work to make sure that the way we are looking at the water that goes to your property now is, is corrected with our design. Right? So there is, uh, you know, checks and balances with regards to the town. That's they're going to hire somebody that has no skin in the game from our standpoint, right? They're not tied to us. They're going to hire somebody else to review our work.
Alright, my second question. I'm allowed more than one? Okay, um.
Get out of here, no.
For as long as we've been on Baker Lane, we've had three water breaks, if not more.
Five.
Five.
Five down to the end of the hill.
Okay, so I'm wondering if you plan on having the, the main water come up and down through Baker Lane, are we going to have all new piping?
So throughout the development, there will be, and then it's going to be some of the conversation with the water department of what kind of improvements they want to be made by themselves, but also as part of the development, right? But yes, from here to here will be no new water main, and then there'll be a conversation with them and what, what else needs to be improved, so. But yes, we will have the conversation with the water department of what needs to be.
And my, my last question is, you said that you were going to present your plans at a further date and then the owners are going to sell those lots to a development. Now, is there any time in the near future when the present owners are going to want to sell off lots just to get rid of some of the lots?
Uh, so, no, when they, would I, so he's got, they're going to bring in a, a developer that's going to build this roadway and also build the, the housing unit.
Okay.
Right? So it doesn't make sense for a developer to just come in and build the roads and sell the lots. What they make their money off is the houses in this industry. So they don't make their money off just selling lots. Like if, if the landowner right now were to build the roads, yes, they can make enough money off selling the lots, but they're not, they're not road builders.
I guess I was wondering i- if people wanted to buy more acreage in back of their house as a buffer, would that be possible sometime for anybody who's open to that?
Uh, I'm sure there is a cost that the developer would sell a lot, yes.
Okay.
Um, there's a cost for everything, right?
I know, oh, I understand. I understand. Everything costs money. Alright, thank you very much.
Next. Yeah.
Two questions. Kristen Broschu. Um, my first, it may be a little bit ahead of the game, but in terms of you kept referencing residential units, are we talking single family homes? Duplexes like that's currently being built?
So by right out here, you can do single family homes or duplexes? I don't know that answer because we don't know who the developers.
Okay.
So some of the developers that we work with build single family homes, other ones build duplex. I don't know that answer.
Okay.
Uh, because like I said, the, the people that own the property, they're not developing it. They're not going to.
Right.
And so by, by right, by the zoning, you can do either one, right? And so that's why they were able to build a duplex right, right next door here. What was your interest in?
Um, six, sixty two Cottage Lane. I live right next door to the duplex that's being built. My second question is in reference to the road. You talked about Baker Lane and managing traffic and referencing Cottage Lane being in better shape. I don't know if you've driven down Cottage Lane lately and it's not. So my question is just what is going to change about that in terms of like managing that traffic?
So that was part of the conversation I know we had before with the D P W, and that's going to be some of our conversation we have after we get through this process is the sit down with the D P W director and find out what he wants. Because I know there was some conversation, I think, from the bridge, right, from bridge up to here was really the concern. Does it really narrow?
And now all the sand too from the construction.
And that's the problem, right? They, they built the duplex and, and further damaged the road, yeah. So I actually, I was out there midway through the construction because we're looking at the entrance and seeing what kind of impact they were making to this piece of property. So we did see what the damage they made, so.
You all set?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Yeah.
Gary Roberts, thirteen Stevens Way. Am I correct in the last builder was told wholeheartedly you cannot exit or put a road onto an a private way or an unaccepted road? Why are they putting a road there?
Well, I could answer that.
Yeah, okay.
Under the special permit that they came from manufactured homes, the requirement in there says you, you have to tie into a public way. Specific, the writing of that regulation that the board wrote, I know Kirk was part of that. It specifically said you have to tie your driveways for that development into a public way. Subdivision control law doesn't specify that it has to be a public way. Just has to be an approved subdivision that was approved by the board. And so if this is an approved subdivision by the board, we can still tie into the layout of that approved subdivision. It doesn't have to be a public way.
Why didn't he use that excuse last time?
Because it wasn't a subdivision.
He couldn't, actually, I wrote that bylaw for the, um, uh, manufactured home seniors, uh, fifty five and up manufactured home bylaw. And it was like Wes had just said, you, you had to come out onto a town road.
Public way.
A public way.
So there's a difference, right? So this part of Baker Lane and Stevens Way hasn't been accepted by the town. It's still a private way.
Yeah.
So we can technically connect on a subdivision control law into a private way. This is an approved subdivision by the board. It's not a public way. The regulation for manufactured homes specifically said it had to tie into a public way.
Which would be an already accepted roadway. But even then, we, we're going to try to keep that gated where it's not a primary use for at all.
What do you think the construction trucks are going to come? They're going to come right down that road.
You can condition.
They're going to do it whenever they want. You watch and see.
Well, no, it, it all depends on how we condition it. Like Wes had just said, if we just tell them they can't use Baker Lane and they can't use Baker Lane. We'll send Mr. Peterson out there with some stop sticks, this on the roll across the road. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Ron Parent, seventy eight Cottage Lane.
Yeah, Ron Parent, seventy eight Cottage Lane. Um, there's talk, there was talk in the past about access roads between my house and this new house that's being built. Um, is that still a possibility, or is there a possibility of an access road into the new development above our house at the turnaround?
The, the duplex is here, right? This is where the duplex is being built, and so we're going, coming right to the right of the duplex. When that, when that lot was sold out to build the duplex, we, we left enough frontage to be able to put a roadway in.
Okay, so there'll be nothing going on beyond our house?
Okay, so are you familiar with what he's talking about?
So you're the last
No, just that one access right there?
So between the, you and the new duplex.
Right, right, okay, and how is that? So there's gonna be a road going in, there probably hasn't been a decision made yet as to how that's gonna be landscaped, fenced, or anything to separate.
So we're required to do street trees by the regulations. At that point, I don't know if, if the, if the board is willing to not allow street trees and do fencing, we could we can negotiate that as part of the definitive plans. So we haven't got to that point, but by regulation, we're required to do street trees.
Once the proposed prelim, uh, definitive plan is here, that's when everything shows on the plan, and that's when we go back, well, actually, once the preliminary plan is, that's when we tell them, we want this, want that, you, you know, your concerns go into the the factor of, like you said, fence, trees, shrubs. We beat it up before they, um, get their final approval.
So the edging of the road, how far does that have to be away from our property line?
The edging, um.
You know, the curb on the street itself? Is there a, a certain minimum distance that it has to be away from our property line?
So the right away is fifty feet, um, the pavement width is, I'm gonna say twenty six feet. And so, I can tell, actually, I can tell you right now, I'm not even, yes, I didn't even let's see. So we put the sidewalk on the other side, closest to the duplex. You don't have a sidewalk, so there's a little less disturbance on your side. But we're about thirty feet or so from the property line to the edge of pavement.
Okay, so, uh, thank you.
And what we did is we centered the roadway between the property lines, between your property line and the property line.
Right.
So. On the left-hand side as you come in, so we put it to the duplex up.
Great, thank you.
Any belts from the audience? Sir?
Mike Bellababer.
Address?
Fourteen Stevens Way. So I see you possibly could have forty vehicles, forty forty houses, or maybe forty or eighty vehicles? Is there gonna be enough parking for all those vehicles?
And, and so there are parking requirements that the town has, and so each unit, whatever, if it's a house or a duplex, would be required to provide two spaces for for you.
Now, the, the first plan you showed us had an acre, it had, you, you wouldn't need a special permit for that.
We would not need, no, we would not, no.
Except you wouldn't be able to tie in on Stevens Way.
No, we would still, it's, it's still a subdivision. So it's still, under subdivision control law, you can tie into a private way as long as it was approved by this, by the planning board. And so we would still have that tie-in. And, and even under this iteration, we would still propose to have a, a gated entrance onto Baker's Lane. We, we don't wanna have, like I said, we know the intersection of Baker's Lane and Two A is, is dangerous. The intent, and that was one of the early conversations we had with the board, um, is not to have that access out there, but this was asked for by the fire department. He'd rather have a, a real road that is a town road, that they can have plowed by the town, maintained by the town, and then they don't have to worry about having easements over people's properties and, and stuff like that.
So will they ever be able to get rid of that gate and make it a?
It's up, it's up to the town, really, it's up to the select. Right, it's up to the select.
So that, if we've put that road in, it's very possible that they would use it sometime. Okay?
Well, yeah, yeah, here's, here's the thing, is who would petition to remove the gate? I know it's not the people on Stevens and, and Baker, right, so.
Could be all those, the people on the other.
It, it, it could be, but but like I said, that intersection down here, I would, I'd rather come down Cottage Lane myself, but and that was the intent, right, to use the safer intersection.
Now, all your stormwater, that's, it's all going to those proposed
We were looking at, you know, because we have a set of catch bases right now, if we get the elevations to work to come down here, and then another set of catch basins, so we're looking at, if we can get it out here, we may be able to get it up to that basin there. Uh, there is a decent amount of pitch that comes down this way.
Right, exactly, so, you're gonna get pump house or something?
Nope, no pumps, just, it would maybe some deeper, deeper pipe, but other than that. And that's really what we're trying to do, is like I said, we're trying to avoid, not avoid, but we, we know there's a, a fair amount of water that comes off the hill, right, into your, your neighborhood. Uh, and we know the drainage system wasn't completed, the roads weren't completed, the drainage system wasn't completed. Uh, so we're trying to not exasperate the issue that's out there now. Like I said, when we do our design, we submit our final plans to the planning board in a definitive stage. They're gonna have the peer reviewer look at it too, uh, and, and I know that the board will forge your questions off as part of that, just like they did in the previous project.
I guess one of my concerns is that you, you, you're gonna have almost as many houses as you were up in the last project, and they were worried about the water. They're worried about the water, you know, the sewer mains and everything else being able to handle it down Baker Lane, so.
And so, yeah, so that's part of the conversation we're still having with the steward departments, is make sure the capacity's there, and, and when you look at even a six-inch water main laid flat, it still provides a, a, a fair amount of capacity for it, it would be, it would be enough capacity to handle this development and, and all the rest of the units on, on Baker's Lane and Stevens Way, so. And that's why, it, it's really the condition of pipe, and I know it came up, the condition of what's the condition of the water main, too, right, there, that's really the thing, is what's the condition of the pipe, more about the than the capacity, so it's, it's the age of the pipes, and, you know, that, this need to be replaced.
But that meeting hasn't took place yet, right, that's something you guys still have to get together with the one.
Correct, and what, if, if we were to make that next step and get a payable to that board, then we'll go sit down with those departments and and find out what we need to approve offsite.
Our Cheyenne Spitz Lopez, thirty five Cottage Lane. I know Baker Lane has a lot going on, but when I hear that there's a possible forty, forty-five more plus cars going up and down Cottage Lane, I'm, don't, that doesn't make sense to me, I don't know what the limits are. I know even with just dealing with that duplex and the construction trucks and everything else, it was a nightmare watching some of those, that traffic go through. So forty plus cars really worries me. Really worries me, I don't know, you don't even have a sidewalk, and the road is very narrow, so.
And we've got a lot of young kids on the street now.
Well, either the, um, peer review will go be a traffic study done at the same time, and so we'll let the experts that deal with that, that's they do. They'll double check their plan and, and their, their traffic study as far as the flow of cars and what they will, will will handle, what have you. Um, it's really kind of, should say it's out of our control, because everything's in our control. But that's why we hire peer review experts in different fields to, to answer your questions and whatnot. If they say that, you know, sidewalks in this area, this area, what have you, you, you know, is encouraged, and we'll make it by, you know, we have the right to make it by the, of the of the overall plan for the whole project, so. We're gonna have to, we're not there yet, but this is just, this is just like a cup of coffee discussion right now, it's still preliminary, it's a preliminary preliminary, so we don't really have, it doesn't really have, that's not like a real plan. Don't take that the wrong way, Wes, nice plan, but it's just a, it's like a match, it, it's a, you know, it's written on a napkin right now, so to speak, compared to what we're gonna be looking at as they move forward, and which will be reviewed by a third party from, you know, assigned from us, not from them. So they won't know, well, not to say it's a secret to them, but we picked a peer review agent, they don't. And so it's an independent study of, of their plans, so.
And so when you're applying for the, the two permits today, you have the open concept and half an acre versus an acre, when you guys are approving that permit, are you approving, yes, you can have a minimum of lots, is that what that permit is for today then?
Well, it actually, um, if we, if we choose to go, I, I like the OSID because it's, it saves on development, uh, land development, and it keeps everybody tight, it, it's a closer neighborhoods. And so you don't eat up as much land, which in turn you end up with more open space. And the less land they disturb up there is the better for all, because once you take natural land and smooth it out and put roofs and whatnot, you're gonna end up with more water, and that's why, uh, Wes was saying that. Trying to intercept, that road's actually gonna be a good thing, as far as if you're talking from runoff, because they're gonna catch half the water coming up that hill, and then send it somewhere else, so that's that's significant amount of water from what already comes on to Stevens Way and Baker's Lane, what have you, because it all flows down there, so. Um, it should make a, a, a difference, but like I said, the peer review agents, they'll, engineers, whatnot, they'll make sure that they're happy with it, and we have to take their, you know, their advice.
And I had one more question, I know it didn't necessarily directly involve you, but there was damage to that road, and I'm not sure how we take whoever they get as a developer, how do, how do we make them responsible for taking care of the damage that they cause, if water, water breaks, things like that, you know?
They have to put up a bond.
I'm sorry?
They have to put up a bond, uh, uh, yeah, a, 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 a bond, security bond, so the town's protected, in other words, if it's a we'll use like hypothetical, if it's a, a million dollar road, they need a million dollar bond before they start building their million dollar road. So it's, from a developer's standpoint, it's very expensive, because you have to give a million, then you have to spend a million to do the job, to get your million back. Money companies don't just bond anybody, they have to have a track record of being able to perform, so. So to answer your question, we don't release the bond until the project's done.
It goes to the town directly?
The town, the plan, it's held on the, under the discretion of the planning board, so. Got some place to protect the town, so if a developer walks away, goes out of business, so, you know, whatever, you just never know, somebody dies, whatever. But we do have, um, sufficient money, um, before the project can actually break ground.
Which is the difference that you had with
Oh, I was gonna say, what happens with Stevens Way?
There was a thousand dollar bond back in the eighties, you know?
Yeah, it was, it was a engineered estimate, it was, it was a straight cost, and it was, was never done.
So we do protect the town as far as, from a financial standpoint. And we can't just to we, planning board, we signed off on the lot. I know, did you do the plan for the, the one lot you're talking about? Once it's sold to the, a private person, you know, we don't have any saying. If they're messing up the road, call DPW or call the, you know, the local police department, they'll open the note of it. But we, as planning board, we can't do anything about it. In no different if you break the curb of the road in front of your house, we don't have any saying anymore, because it's already your house. Call the proper authorities, they say, I'm not being wise, I'm just trying to say that, you call the highway department or something like that.
Sorry, this might be a My name is Greg McJuan, thirty seven Baker Lane. Um, if those are half acre lots, can a duplex still be built on a half acre lot?
Yes, by right, it can be.
It can be, so.
The size that would have to be appropriate to the lot, right, so it makes it a little tighter to put a duplex up.
They still have to meet the setbacks, so.
And then to, with the parking vehicle, like
I was just saying, so I said, there's, there's a possibility, but there could be twenty duplexes in there. And that would double the number of cars going up and down Cottage Lane.
Right.
That would be
But you gotta keep in mind, that's in, that's in our bylaws, that's by right, when you, whether you built your house or what have you, anybody in this room could buy a lot in town and put a duplex on, it's nothing great, no, it's, it's basically it's your right, and so what we don't do is take people's rights away. At least this board don't. Oh, now all the hands go up. We'll start with this woman right here.
Mary Schaffer, Oakwood Lane. Um, are there any provisions for the infrastructure of the water main issues, um, for Baker Lane and where we're along Patriots Road? Uh, for building up that infrastructure before you approve as many as twenty homes up there?
Well, right now, we're just investigating the concept of it. And like Mr. Fliss had said, regardless of which route they go, they, they're still gonna go one or the other. And once we give them their direction, they still have to go to the water department, and the water department's gonna say, well, this is a week's, but they're gonna negotiate with the water department, or the water department's gonna either work with them, or I'm sure they're gonna, they're gonna work with them anyway, but whether the water department's gonna do some work, or they're gonna give a little financial support to the water department, I have no idea, that's a whole nother board, that, that would be the water department's meeting when the time comes. Um, so we can't answer that, and it's, it's on our, it's out of our purview, we can only do what's on the plan, is what we're charged with, anything that's offsite would be the appropriate, whether it be light and water, or, or what have you. Um, or highway department, we can't speak for something that was free, so. Sir?
Bill Vining, Stevens, Stevens Way. Um, do you know at all whether or not these houses are gonna be for sale or for rent?
Should be for sale. A lot of the, so there is, I say that is, if the economy stays the way it is, all the developers sell their stuff. Right, even the two units that just went up on Cottage Lane, they're selling the two units, right? The reason I would say should be is because when the economy went downhill, I'll give you examples, when the Whale Park got developed. Initially, that was supposed to be all for sale, the economy went downhill, they rented everything for five, ten years. They've sold a lot of it since, because now the economy went up, they can make enough money. But if the economy were to change, and renting is the only way they can make money, they may just rent them, so that's what I would say, the intent is to sell them. But I can't tell you what the economy's gonna be in a year, so.
And one other question is, is there any plans at all in improving Stevens Way?
Gary?
Gonna ask about the, uh, water and sewer, is it gonna be water and sewer down there?
Correct, yeah.
So, last time the guy was told the pipes can't handle any more than what they already are, so who's on the hook for tying in and putting all new, if they, they're gonna have to increase or redo all the piping, is the town on the hook? For this?
So if, if, when we go to the meeting with the sewer commission?
It was millions he was telling, talking about.
I'm not sure with the other developer.
No, this was the, uh, DPW guy was telling, it would, the costs were probably a couple million just to redo all the pipes.
For the sewer commission, and then whatever they tell us, if, if there's not enough to pass in the pipes, we'll cost that way it would be to improve the sewer, however, wherever it needs to be.
So you guys would pay for everything? We get that in writing?
We can't force the town to approve sewer for the development.
No, but if it's the, on the hook for your, your development, that's not.
So as the definitive stage comes along, each department gets the way in back to the planning board. If the sewer department would say, we can't allow sewer, that's a condition of approval, that we can't tie for sewer. And then we'd have to figure a different way of doing that, it could be septic.
Can they do septic?
If they, if they deny sewer, they can.
There'd have to be room.
And then we would have to, if we could tie into the water, then it provides a little more room for septic, if we were denied water and sewer, then we would have to go back to the conventional plan of one acre lots, because then we wouldn't have big enough lots to do wells and septic under a fluscent.
And one more question, if our road gets wrecked, the DPW will not fix it.
Yeah, which road?
Stevens Way.
Stevens Way?
They tell us year after year they can't touch it.
In some private ways.
That's correct.
Yeah, well, we can, we can, we can condition it, and they, they stay off, or it'll be part of the bond to fix it, if that's the case, you know, either way. Anybody else in the audience have any questions?
One other thing, Bill Vining again, um, the last developer, when they were looking at putting in all these retention ponds, we asked them if there was enough depth to do that, and he said that he dug bore holes.
They, so we dig deep holes, yeah.
Yeah, there were no bore holes dug.
Not, not, we don't do boring, you know, we do, we take a backhoe and we go dig, and we find groundwater. So we're always concerned about what the groundwater depth is, because the state has requirements about how far above the groundwater we have to put the bottom of these detention basins. So that, that was what the
And, and, you know, always fibers piping, water piping and sewer and drainage and all that.
We would have to do it to the town requirements. So whatever the sewer department tells us we have to do, we So whatever the sewer department tells us we have to do, we have to do. Whatever the water department tells us we have to do, we have to do. Whatever hydrants, the fire department wants in, we put it.
Well, the only reason I ask is all back there, it's all ledge.
Oh, and and that's why we'd like to tie to the sewer and have sewer as shallow as we can and.
Yeah.
If we have to make improvements, that's if it's economically viable to do, improve the sewer, then we'll, you know, improve the sewer. But that's conversation we have to do with the sewer commission.
You you don't need a backhoe to dig for water. There's standing water everywhere.
Come to my basement.
Yeah. You don't need to dig.
Anybody have, we'll get any questions for now? Guys, any questions?
Like the question a little bit, the last seven through ten seem very. Not sure about the acreage, it looks a little odd.
Yep, so. Because the way your zoning is written, we only have to have a certain uh width requirement after the houses, right? So we're able to make some funny shaped lots in the town of Templeton. They look odd, yep, and we've done them all over the state, because some towns have with requirements that restrict that type of shape and some don't. Um the requirements in Templeton are a little less restrictive regards to the shape, and so. We have enough room in the front there to put houses and then we make up our lot area by making them. Right, a stem here and a couple skinnier stems there. But though, this is, this is our yield plan. Right, this is the, this is the plan we we would tend to do.
Yeah, that's the one, I think it was. But even so, on that one, same thing. Where are the open space areas? One of them is here.
If you have open space, it encompasses the entire, around the entire development there and then around the development.
How much of this is actually usable? It's all downhill, like a.
Uh, there is some slope too, but it's not, to be honest with you, this isn't terrible, like if if we were to make a, well, we. It's, the intent is to stay as open space, right? And I and I know the previous developer did some stuff up, some clearing out there that nobody was happy about. Including us, because it makes our job harder. Um but. This slope here isn't terrible. Yes, as we get further off the property, yes, it definitely gets steep. Over in this corner here, it gets real steep. But we're not looking to do anything other than just leaving it as as open space, let it grow back and and be, you know, treat. Um undergrowth that comes up and just let it, let it grow back into some natural rubber.
There's all of this, there are a couple, there are homes down here that are also gonna be impacted. I know that's in Gardner, but uh.
Well, actually, this is down toward the pond.
Right.
And we we avoid, I know the the solution was just approved in Gardner is kind of over here, so we kind of avoid even what they're providing, that's part of their space. This kind of ties into the back of that, that.
That's like, like you pointed out, this is gonna increase the drainage.
Well, again, we need to meet what goes to this property line now.
Well.
Afterwards, right? And so the basin will be sized appropriately and then you you guys have your.
Cause the tree and post need to be the same.
Be short less because it's so hard to be right on that fine line, so. Then the same thing will happen over here at these property lines too, with the water.
All right, anybody else in the audience, any more questions for the engineer for tonight?
I have one last question. I don't even know if it can be answered here, but again, with. The construction stuff that was going up and down our road, they would bomb through with full dump trucks. So even if they were going, I think it's supposed to be twenty five, if it's not marked. They definitely were not, but even if they were, they were full. And if somebody walked in front of them, they'd be taken out. They wouldn't be able to stop. Um is there something that can be put in place to ensure that? I don't know, I I kept getting told to call the police, but there are different drivers all the time, they're already gone behind the time I call. What can I do when this starts to make sure that it's safe for everybody?
Well, I think uh uh number one, I think posting it would be, and then at the same token, once the. The project gets going, it's gonna be ongoing thing, they're not gonna skip days, so it'd be easier to have the police department monitor. When it's an active construction site, um because it's not like the guys only coming one, once and I missed them, like you just said. Whereas an active construction site, they'll be going, you know, on a daily basis, so it'd be easy to post it. I mean, can't answer the. But you know, can't answer for traffic laws, but I agree a hundred percent what you're saying, Lord.
Have we ever done temporary like speed bumps or anything like that?
No, I'm sure the police department wouldn't mind if we did.
As long as it's not within time, I think, right? The DPW didn't like the speed bumps.
Right.
What I will tell you too is one of the things. Different than what happened on this project is, for a project of this size, there'll be a pre-construction meeting. So, yes, we are permitting for the landowner, we know that a developer will end up buying it and develop it. But before he can start construction, they have to have a pre-construction meeting with the town officials, be you know Kirk and. Yeah, and the other town, applicable town officials, right? And so if it's a part of condition that. Speed bumps put out there and traffic is supposed to be, construction traffic is supposed to be monitored and. That could be addressed at that point too. And I know it's it's down the road, but there are things that could be conditioned like that, that. That's brought up during that pre-construction meeting. So it's, it is a little different with a, a project with this size, right? It's the same company coming up and down the road and the same trucks, it's, it's not as in free for as Kirk was talking about, so.
And it's not, um, it's not, I mean, it's. Those speed bumps are pretty unforgiving if you're driving a truck. I own a commercial property, I put them on my own property. And the guy hits, you can hit that over five miles an hour, you hit in the head on the roof, you know, and and the cab, so. It's fun to watch them actually, but it's feeling aside, it tells him it's a bump gear, but they won't ignore it, it's fun to watch. Jerry?
Let's see, if Cottage Lane is in such poor condition, having all those trucks on there, they're gonna damage the. Is that being so narrow, is that, can somebody apply for like weight limits? Being put on that street because it's so narrow, small streets like that are gonna get. Destroyed by big trucks and they're gonna have a lot of big trucks in and out all day long.
The only thing is I know is that the argument's been heard before in different towns, what have you. And the truck is gonna tell you, well, I pay my excise tax, I pay my road tax, I pay my tax like everybody else does. So unless they're gonna outlaw ten wheelers or tri axles, but dump trucks or concrete trucks, you can't stop it. Not being a wise guy, but it's, they have the same rights you do. Nobody can tell you whether you can drive your car or your pickup truck today. No different somebody driving a dump truck. They have the same rights everybody else does, they actually. When there's an accident or whatever, it's always the truck's fault, the truck was paid though. They they pay for it all. People complain about the trucks. When you get home, you can't wait for the Amazon bag to show up. Well, how the hell you think it got there? You know? So to answer your question, no, we can't restrict trucks on any road in town.
Would they be responsible for the damage to the roads?
Um that was part of what we was talking about the bonding amount, right? So that's. Part of the negotiation with the DPW about, and I know we've already had the conversation in the past about what needs to be done to Cottage Lane, at least the end of it. So part of that was, there was some improvements that needed to be done with widening it, right? Which which you just touched on. And so maybe that work gets, you know, maybe it gets widened with gravel now, but then resurfaced afterwards or something along those lines, once construction's completed, so there's. You know, it's nicer when everything's completed, obviously.
Yeah, but that's people's property, except what Emmett and Bill Maine, you're gonna take.
No.
People's property to widen the road?
The town doesn't own just the edge pavement. The town owns more than.
But I, looking at some of those, it goes right up to people's property, because it's an old road, some of the property lines go right up to.
The right of way is wider than the edge pavement.
Well, I I understand that, but some of the, in order to widen the road, you might infringe on somebody else's property.
We're not wide, we're not looking to widen it thirty feet, we're looking to widen it.
Oh, yeah.
Two feet or one foot on each side of it.
Yeah, it's a narrow part that really narrows down.
Bridge up. Sort of like seeing that was, that was easy to decide right there from the bridge up, at least. It needs to be all reworked.
I know it's the desire, desire of the owners of the property to put in as many lots as possible, but. I don't know if anybody has looked at. Development across from Aiken's Garage on Ballenville Road.
Yep.
This is gonna look, in my opinion, at least pretty much the same as that.
No, that's a.
No, that's manufactured home.
That's manufactured homes.
Huh? That's manufactured.
That's manufactured home, that's private property.
There's only fifteen feet between those properties.
Yeah.
Yeah, but how much?
You you. A minimum of thirty feet by yourself, regulation, between each unit.
All right, well, we meet like sideline properties of fifteen feet or?
So the sidelines, we have fifteen feet.
Same setback.
And that's what I said is, when you look at the minimum frontage, you're in your cluster, regular OSRD regulation. We can do seventy five feet, but if we went seventy five feet with fifteen in each side of subtraction, we only get forty five feet, right? It's been given in it, it's not a lot. So the frontage we're looking at is a hundred feet across the way. So I know the plan in front of you looks a little bit smaller because it's a hundred scale plan, it's a. It's a little more compressible plan because we wanted to show the entire property. But there's a hundred foot frontage there. With the fifteen foot offset, you have seventy feet to play with, to put a house in. And that's where. By right, yeah, you have the ability to do single family in duplexes, but putting duplexes on some of those lots, I think it's difficult. Yeah, a lot of the developers that we know on something like this, they they like single family houses on something, right? So. Uh but there's nothing that we can do to. Maybe the zoning is what it is, so if they, if somebody wants to put a duplex in, they put a duplex in, but. But a lot of those lots really kind of fit as single family houses, but I would be important now. But it's gonna be more your theater colonials that maybe.
No, we don't have any subdivisions for duplexes anymore.
Can they mix and match?
It it's all in the, really all in the developers, right? It's by right, you can do singular or duplexes, right?
Yep. All right, is that it, Dennis? We good? Right there tonight? No, go.
Nothing to say?
All right. Anybody else in the audience? Keep in mind, this is just a. Very, very, very preliminary meeting, so. Wes, how do you um wanna go? We need to give you a decision on um the OSID. You know, I'm correct, we're not gonna probably render it tonight, we'll discuss it in the next meeting or something.
So it, so I, yeah, so if you wanna make, what's it, first meeting in July?
Second Tuesday?
Tuesday?
Well done.
What's that, the uh?
Eighth, you're good.
Yeah. Get a calendar in your head.
Going on vacation?
That's what I was asking for the eighth instead of the the two next week.
Right.
Maybe the next meeting, you guys discuss conditions? And then we come back in July to talk about conditions and any other thing that may arrive.
Think it's a public hearing, so we're gonna have to continue the. Keep the public hearing um.
Yeah.
Going, so um why don't we do that? Guess what you would say, that's a few good idea, I just don't wanna too much in one night. Think about it a little bit. So we meet on the uh the twenty fourth, Laurie?
Yes.
All right, so this will be for the board's discussion only, I'm not gonna take any more input on the twenty fourth, because we're just really. And decide whether it's OSID or conventional. So we'll continue the public hearing to the twenty fourth, six thirty. Does that work?
Need to vote.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
Yeah, it works for me.
Okay.
Make a motion that we continue the public hearings until.
June twenty fourth.
Yep, six thirty. You have a second, yes? All right, um all in favor? Yes, Joey, yes, Dennis, yes, unanimous, thank you. Okay, this hearing is closed for the evening. Thanks for coming and um. If you had to come back on the twenty fourth, just so you know, once you see the advertising whatnot. You have to, it won't be advertised, it won't be in the paper, nobody will be invited, but you just have to follow along when we continue. And it's not the end of the world if you miss one or if you can't remember what it is. It's um posted, how long in advance?
Forty eight hours.
Forty eight hours in advance, and we only meet the second and the fourth Tuesday of the month, so. Easy to keep it together. Thanks for behaving tonight, folks.
Are copies of those plans available for all of us individually?
I can actually post them on our, it's. I can send you guys an email. I know one of you gets the word out. Um I have the P, I'll send it to Bill Vining. Um I can send the PDFs and you can share.
All right.
Does that work?
Thank you.
That'd be great, thank you.
I can kind of have a list.
We good, all right? We are so well behaved tonight.
It was a good meeting.
I might invite you guys back to another party. Hello, Adam, not you. Good seeing you, bud.
Good seeing you.
Hi.
I can let you know too.
Yeah, that that would be cool. I just meant to say hi to you earlier.
Good night.
Yeah, thank you.
Your neighbor?
Cottage Lane, my mom and dad still live there.
Oh, so your parents still live there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Bob reports to me quite frequently what's going on up the hill.
Yeah, all right, uh, all right, where are we gonna left you tonight, Wes?
I think you're up to minutes.
Yep.
All right, I'm up to the minutes, holy cow, the minutes we have.
Because. You, as long as you have read the minutes, even if you weren't there, you actually can vote on them.
Did I make a motion to accept the minutes from uh? Two twenty five, three eleven, three twelve and. And five thirteen. So moved. Move's been made and seconded to accept the minutes. From all of the dates I just mentioned, all in favor? Oh, discussion, or do we all send this?
No.
Okay, well good, unanimous.
I I didn't read them all.
I read them all.
I trust you.
Yeah. You guys are so efficient when it comes to minutes, it's like I I'm afraid to even argue with you, so.
Jessica does a really good job.
She does do a good job.
Yeah.
Okay, um. Next meeting is June twenty fourth, as it says in uh on the agenda and. I can't ask for new business anymore, I can just, how's everything going everybody?
You can, I I will start putting new business on there, but you.
No, I just, we've always just done that as far as just a.
I know, but.
Expression and what's going on kind of thing, but.
Right, and anything that you want would have to go on the next meeting as.
Right.
New business.
Right.
Okay, all right.
And then um.
Don't want you to think I'm mean.
Everybody, if you wanna give that some thought, as far as the OSID versus conventional for the next meeting. Just give us some thought and we'll, we'll handle it to the next meeting. Fair enough. All right, uh with that being said, then let's see if anybody has anything else to add, motion adjourned?
I'll make a motion, where's your?
Second.
Second.